Okay, we'll call today's January 23 meeting of the Bannock County Commissioners to order. First order of business is we have the invoices, commissioners' reports, and we have our credit card authorization form. Any questions on any of those items?
No, Brad Thurlman.
I have a couple, because it must be the new kid on the block. That rent for the District 6 office, that one over on Lander, what's that? That's $10,000 a month.
Yes.
Lander?
We get a, not Lander, but-
It's a community center. City center.
Portmouth Health Trust does give a subsidy towards that. So the rent is $10,000, but they give us, and I would have to look, a couple thousand dollars to offset it.
I swallowed hard on that one. That's our D6 office over there. The only other thing is Crime Tracer with City of Pocatello. Is that a software?
Crime Tracer?
You would point that out for me on the commissioner's report, I can look and tell you.
Okay.
Do you have a page or a-
Uh, yeah, some more. I highlighted it. I'm just curious whether that's a software, that's a service, or... Anyway, I'll, I'll get to it. And I'll, I'll just curious what that is. With City of Pocatello, I assume that must be-
Probably a grant.
Okay.
A shared grant thing, but without seeing the page number and the account number.
Okay, that was the only thing I had. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I will make that motion to approve that report and pay the bills.
Okay, we have a society. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, any questions on the payroll report?
No.
I'll accept a motion then.
I'd make a motion to accept a payroll report.
If a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that is it. We don't have any salary rate approval forms or anything like that, so with that, I believe we're ready to move on to the work session, which means Maggie.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Hello.
So, I think you all know Ken Keller, who is our Environmental Health Director. And I asked Ken to come along this morning to provide a couple updates on two situations in Bannock County that his team has been working on that I think have the potential to maybe rise to your attention, and so we just wanted to make sure that you had an update from us on those things. So I'll just turn the time over to Ken.
Yeah, so the first one is regards to Moonlight Mountain Recovery. This is at Pocatello Creek, way up to the top. And the situation there is they had a, well, it was a residential home to begin with, a five-bedroom home. And that switched to a residential treatment facility. And the situation is that just so much wastewater was being generated, that system eventually failed. So they had a failed septic system, and we've been working on them for quite a while on an engineered design that could accommodate the new higher flows. It's a very difficult site with steep slopes. There's a stream that runs right near the property. There's a pond across the street. It really took a lot of imagination and engineering to find a system. So, and then as soon as that happens, you know, winter's hit, but we have them making progress. It is started, the construction, but it's a little bit slower going with the weather right now. But permit's been issued and progress is being made there. The other one is we received a complaint for fast stop on the corner of Oak and Jefferson. And they had a situation where they had some water leaks near the soda machine, and it created a lot of mold, a mold situation. There was also some mold, heavy mold in the walk-in cooler. So construction commenced on that. They should be done, I think they're set to reopen today. They also had some asbestos tiles that needed to be replaced. So they voluntarily closed while that work was being done by a professional asbestos certified company that could take care of that properly. But they're set to reopen today. They've been down about three, four days during that construction, and they're set to reopen. So we're gonna go there today and look at that again.
On the Moonlight Mine, was there contamination in the water or anything?
So it was surfacing up on top, so they, right now, the system is pumped probably 500 feet up on a hill. And that's probably, that was really, as you walk that hill, you can see the like shallow depth to shale, you can see where they trenched it. So that's not an ideal spot either. So we've got it down lower with a more complex system that will treat the wastewater, and it's down like near, near the building. So it was surfacing up there. They get their tanks pumped frequently to alleviate that. As of right now, we're hoping they'll wrap this installation up in the next week or so.
It was concerning to the neighbors in the area, for sure. We got some calls from neighbors that live in that vicinity because there was open sewage on the ground, and nobody wants that. So Ken's team has done, I think, a really good job working with the property owner and the installer to find a solution that will work long-term. Because like he said, the original septic system that was put in on that property was for like a single-family residence, and they're operating a treatment facility, inpatient treatment facility there. So there are a lot more people living there than you would expect to see in a single-family residence, and so it just overwhelmed the system.
I mean, they're confined there as patients.
Yeah, yeah.
So between, so between discovery and resolution, what's been the mitigation efforts they've taken?
Primarily pumping of the tanks, yeah.
So did the tank like split, or how did the tank fail?
What's that?
How did the tank fail?
Did the tank fail, or?
No. Well, okay, so initially, they were having troubles with the pumps in the septic tank that pump it up on the hill. And they kept replacing pumps, kept replacing pumps, but they did end up getting that fixed. But then it ended up being, like, the soil becomes hydraulically overloaded where it just can't take it anymore, so it surfaced. Never, we've been up there a few times checking on it, never did we see it like flowing down the hill. It was just pounding on the surface, which is not great, but at least it wasn't running down the hill.
And you think that will be done this week, or within the next week?
We're hoping, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it took a little while for the engineer to come up with a plan, and then get that plan approved. And then getting an installer available to do it, it's been challenging, for sure.
So are the neighbors a little restless?
Yeah, the neighbors, they've called, and we keep them updated, like, yes, we're looking at this.
Just, I don't know. I was on the commission before when that got approved, and I was so nervous about that one, because of the same, the neighborhood was, again, that house was designed for a single-family. Then all of a sudden, the parking, everything else, and that was really a-
Yeah, it was designed for like a five-bedroom home.
And including parking access and the whole nine. Has there been any other issues with that other, that you know of? Or what I worry about is even going down the road. This is, what's the next thing that could happen that would complicate? You know, the neighborhood, the access, is there any, do you see anything else that would-
I haven't seen anything else, but if this system fails, then we're really in a pickle.
Yeah, that was-
We're up the creek without paddle.
This is the only spot-
I've been up there with Herzog. Yeah, and that was before-
The neighbors aren't happy anyway.
No, and they weren't, they weren't happy at the time. It came to an appeal.
Yeah.
I voted against it because of a lot of those issues, but it went through anyway, and so I'm just curious. I hope there's not some other things coming down the road that could jeopardize that operation after, but I worry about that because it is in a residential neighborhood that was designed for that.
Yeah.
So I appreciate your watchful care over that, and just make sure nothing else rares up there.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Okay.
Do you have questions for us that we can try and answer?
I'll just say that when I go get a soft drink, I am very leery anymore. Appreciate some of the pictures of this, this other place, I'll tell you. And they were pretty, they were working with you very well on Jefferson?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's, there's gotta be a lot of other of those same-age convenience stores about that same time.
Yeah, there's a few that look exactly the same, and figure they're about the same age. Some of that's age. This one, I think, was due to a leak that most of this mold was behind like the fountain machine, where really, the only way to see it is to take that fountain machine out. But then once they took it out, yeah, it was-
It was bad.
It was bad.
Thankfully, they closed voluntarily during the remediation, so like Ken said, they should be opening back up today.
Yeah, and there was also an employee that was hospitalized, could be mold, you know, from mold issues, but-
Okay.
Thank you.
Right around the same time.
I don't have any other questions to you.
Just a statement. We've changed positions here, and Commissioner Huff is going to be on the board.
Okay.
You get to see me now.
Okay. Well, we will miss seeing you, Ernie, on a regular basis, but guess we'll get to see you at these meetings.
Yes.
And Commissioner Huff, how would you prefer that we communicate like the meeting schedule to you and that sort of thing?
Just send it to the commissioners' email, to Kristi.
To Kristi?
Yeah, she'll get it to me.
Okay.
You want to work, Greg?
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, thanks for the update. Scott?
Good morning, Commissioner. Scott Crowther, event director, business manager. I've got a couple contracts to talk to you about today.
Is it Amber?
I don't know, I see that red, and I think we can deny everything.
I'm with you. Because if we hang out with Amber, that's all we can say.
I will.
Okay, so Amber is, do you want to tell us a little bit about your event?
Yes, so I am a volunteer with Donor Connect, and it is a nonprofit organization out of Utah. I don't know if you guys are aware, but they actually do not perform any organ transplants here in the state of Idaho, so everything is sent to Utah, Oregon, Washington, one of the surrounding states. So Donor Connect is who heads up the education program here in Idaho. So we actually have paid educators on staff who go into driver's ed classes, they go into high school health classes, things like that, and educate teenagers really around that driving age as to facts and things like that about organ donation, how it works, that it saves lives. We do a big fundraiser here in Idaho every year. It is up at the Portmouth Wellness Complex. It is a 5K walk and run. We use the path, we do not block off usage from anyone else, we use one of the pavilions there. We are very good about making sure everything is cleaned up, picked up, we're really good about doing that. I don't think we've ever had any complaints, and we've held this event there for years.
So they, they utilize the walking path, they don't restrict any other access to the path during their event, and then they use Pavilion Number Three. So, and they are requesting a fee waiver for Pavilion Three, correct? So you guys didn't pay anything last year?
I don't think so. Sorry, I'm just, I'm not paid staff, I'm just volunteer here in town.
So it's just a fee waiver of the Pavilion rental, and then permission to use the path for, for their event?
What date is that?
June 28th, is that right?
Yep.
June 28th. We previously, so our head person down there had changed, and the last two years, unfortunately, it ended up on the same weekend as the Spenderella, and so we didn't have nearly as much participation. And so this year, we bumped it back to the fourth week in June, because I believe Spenderella is typically the third.
I think that's right.
Third or second, yeah.
I think that's right.
So it says two half-days.
Yes, usually we use the Pavilion Friday evening because we pack all the bags for, like, the goodie bags, the shirts, things like that, on Friday evening, Friday afternoon, Friday evening, just for those purposes, and for people to have a location for people to come pick up their stuff. And then we use it Saturday till probably about 11:00 and 11:12, we're out of there by completely cleaned up and everything.
And do you put flyers out or anything of that nature?
We do, yes. And typically, we've been renting a booth the last two years at the Spring Fair also to garner education and things like that. We have several volunteers here on staff whose lives have been affected by organ donation, both as donor families and as recipient families. It's a great thing to bring everybody together and honor loved ones. One of the things we do there at the Wellness Complex is we have a memorial garden, and so families are actually able to get these two-by-three little, like, posters almost on stakes that we put just in the grass around there to honor their loved ones. And it's really neat to get family members together and to be able to take pictures from both sides, both donor and recipients, because a lot of these families are able to contact each other down the road. And so it's a really beautiful thing to see, you know, moms who get to see how their children's organs, you know, live on in someone else.
My only deal, I would like, I am 100% in favor of this, but just a token on your flyer or something, thank you, Bannock County, for contributing.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Good with that. Any questions?
No.
Good. I'd make a motion that we go ahead and accept this contract with gift of life walking out.
We have a motion, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Dr. Prof.
Professor. Professor. Go ahead and introduce yourself for the record.
I'm Steve Shropshire, professor at Idaho State University Department of Physics.
So lots of several years, ISU has run their Haunted Spook Laboratory up at the complex, up in B building. And I think that's been, it's been a pretty good success, pretty good partnership with us for the last several years, so do you want to just talk a little bit about your, your event, and then-
Yeah, I prefer to refer to it as the Haunted Science Laboratory, in that it's a program of interactive exhibits. We open it up for field trips from local schools. We had roughly 2,150 visitors in 2024. We had it open for field trips for just under two weeks. It was very popular, a lot of good feedback from the schools. And for a change, we were able to accommodate all of the schools that requested a field trip. Last year and the year before, we could only accommodate a fraction. But last year, the Bannock County Commissioners, thank you again for that, graciously allowed us to use the facility for two weeks instead of one week. And my request for this year is identical to last year's, to allow us to use it again for, for two weeks, to open for field trips, plus 80 days to set up and take down. That means using Building B at the Bannock County Event Center from October 2nd through November 1st.
So a month, not two weeks, but a month.
No, it's the full month, yeah.
Yeah, it's two weeks we open it for field trips, but the exhibit take, takes massive amounts of man-hours to assemble the exhibits, prepare the exhibits, and then pack up and take down. The amount of equipment is actually quite astounding.
And they're requesting a fee waiver for that rental time.
As well as the use of 12 cattle paddles. How's that go?
We just take the paddles up and give them to them, and they set them up, and-
Have you checked with the cattle?
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, it, the reality is, is, you know, by the time these guys get here, the majority of our rodeos are done, so it's, it's not a big deal for us to get the paddles up to them, so.
Yeah, the paddles are used to provide support for partitions, in that some of the exhibits involve flashing lights, like strobe lights, that are a hazard for people with some neurological conditions. And so for safety reasons, we have to block that light from the rest of the exhibits. So that's the primary use of that, basically block either ultraviolet light or the flashing strobes.
Okay. I'm gonna go with Commissioner Moser on this one. What kind of advertising do you have for that?
We do heavy advertising on social media, Instagram, Twitter, Facebook, and Twitch. There's also announcements in the local newspapers, and the local schools, and by local, I mean from Idaho Falls to Rupert, Burley, down to Malad, Bancroft area, Soda Springs. We've had schools from all those areas bus their kids in for field trips. So of course, announcements are sent out to those schools. There are also flyers posted around town, particularly to advertise for the one day that we open it to the public.
Okay. Well, the follow-up would be then, can we be included on that as one of your sponsors if we-
Oh, yes, in fact, you have this.
Okay.
So I believe I sent all of you an email thank you letter, and in the announcements in the paper, as well as on social media, you guys are the primary sponsor.
So I just have one question. You pick the Kiwanis to donate funds to for one day. And why the Kiwanis, and who are the Kiwanis?
The Kiwanis actually approached me. They are a service organization club. Their mission is to support children and youth. And they actually approached me to see if they could make the Haunted Lab program more impactful. And that partnership began in 2011 and has been very successful. They have provided financial support, and on the public day, we allow them to basically charge an entrance fee that goes to support their charities.
And usually, in our contract, we don't allow that. We don't allow to sub out to somebody else, and to me, that's subbing out, because you're getting something for free from Bannock County and then charging the public to utilize that. So I kinda have a little rub on that one. I just, just simply, I mean, that's why I wanted you to explain what the Kiwanis was, but it's something that I don't think is usually, it's usually forbidden in our contracts, and I can't remember on this one or not. But we don't allow people to sub out on stuff like that, our facility, to make profits off of.
I think in some, in some cases, there are people that do run businesses, it just depends on whether they get a fee waiver, right? And so you could look at like any of our other league sports that give the fee reduction, that they still charge a fee to their, to their client to use the thing, the venue to. I think, I think they're pretty comparable.
Well, they're charging to play in the league.
Sure.
Not, not, I mean, anybody can use the facility.
Is your entrance fee, the entrance fee is only for that day, right?
Yes, and if I could provide some context, they, in 2024, supported, basically helped pay for the ISU staff. I pay students, train students to do a lot of the work of the setup, and also run some of the field trips. Having people that have knowledge of the science is actually critical. And also for the materials that we go through. We typically go through between $300 and $400 in batteries alone for some of the things. And they provided $900 in support to ISU for this, and they collected $1,000 in the entrance fee for that one day. So they barely recoup what they provided in support. That's just some useful information, perhaps. But the money that they raise, I never see. It goes straight to the Kiwanis Club for the charities that they have.
And I, just as we talk budgets and stuff, sometimes we have groups come in, and we give them funds through our budget, and then they donate them to other people that we give funds to also. So that's why I want you to explain, I wanted you to explain a little bit, I mean, that this isn't a group that we already give money to, and this isn't, because I, I don't want somebody double-dipping either. I mean, it's one of them deals.
Ken?
I have one question, if I didn't ask it, I got a son that would just box me upside the ears. As a fire marshal, he has to approve all quote "spook alleys." And they say that's the number one thing that causes more safety issues than everything else. I guess I would request that, that since they are the, you know, the city fire marshal controls the safety of all those kind of things, have you had anybody look at any safety issues with, you say it isn't a spook alley, but I don't know where that definition crosses over. You are gonna have a lot of youth going through there, and if something does happen in there, and they run through those cattle padd, I don't know, is, do you have anybody come through there and at least verify that there is no safety issues for the county?
I have to submit a plan to Idaho State University, our Office of General Counsel, and it was reviewed, but as far as I know, they never actually sent anybody to inspect it.
Could I ask that at least, so I don't get in trouble with my son, to at least allow an inspection or see those plans as well? Because what it does, if it does come down to an accident or whatever it is, Bannock County hosting that would be, we would be on the hook right along with everybody else.
I see the difficulty in that, that's never been brought up before.
Okay. Well, I have a son that educates me all the time on what's going on with fire and safety and everything else, and he brought that up, that last year, they, they wouldn't allow a few spook alleys in Pocatello because of the safety issue, and you have to have, you have to have something well-designed, well-lit for exits, everything else. I would feel a lot more comfortable if that, if we did have somebody sign off on that from the safety point of view for the county.
That certainly would-
Other than that, I, I think it's a great thing, I'm-
So from the county, not the city?
Well, you, city is our, they are our fire protection, they are our ambulance.
It would be probably North Bannock Fire District.
Yeah.
It would be North Bannock?
That's a jurisdiction for-
But isn't that City of Pocatello?
I'll call the chief.
No.
Tommy? Yeah, but that is inside the city limits.
When we do the firework, it's North Bannock County Fire District.
But either way, somebody needs to sign off on that, just to make sure we don't have any safety, because it is dark, you have strobe lights, there could be youth in there, the kids, I would feel comfortable if somebody signed off to help the county, whoever that may be. That's a point of the requirement.
Sure.
Other than that, I have good, and no other, I would make the motion to go ahead and approve that contract and do that waiver.
So the only addition to that is the addition of a signed-off safety plan?
Yeah, some, some, somebody needs to go in there with some credentials and sign off on that. That would relieve the county from possible litigation coming back against us.
Okay, we have a motion, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Well, that's inside the city limits, that the City of Pocatello doesn't-
Scammy, no.
But it's city limits.
Scott, on that's done, could you just, right now, like-
It's city limits of that road?
Yeah, I think we might have that, doesn't matter. I'm sure about that. So, I'll talk about it.
Yeah, like, say for the firework, we do, okay, so, North Bannock County, they should have the same kind of restrictions in there.
All right, this is-
Doesn't look like horse racing, what it's me out there.
It is not horse racing season.
It feels like it's already starting.
Although I was in fever this weekend with my son-in-law, and he insisted on gating eight horses with blazing wind and-
Oh, wow.
So, yeah, it really is racing season, I guess. I'm Lucrana Schoonover, president of Pocatello Downs. We have the live horse racing here in Bannock County.
Tom, and so is, I'm sure you two commissioners are probably aware, but Commissioner Block, I'll brief you on it. A few years ago, when we took over the liquor license for the complex, we changed the way we did our contract with Pocatello Downs. They were paying us a fee, and then they were running the liquor up there, or the beer up there at the horse races. We can't really share in the, in the beer sales. And so when we took that over, we changed the contract to essentially be a zero fee for the horse track, and then we take 100% of the alcohol sales and then split the concession sales 50/50. At the time of that, the contract for the horse racers was about $10,000 a year, around $10,000 a year, plus the $100 a month that they pay for an office, they rent an office out of the, the grandstands from us. This last year, the first year we did it, I think our, you know, we, it was a little bit of a learning curve for us, but this is the second year we've done it. This last year- This last year, we brought in about 12,000 in alcohol sales, and we split 10,000 in food sales for the 10 days that they ran. So, and that's a profit. So, it ends up being a pretty beneficial contract for both the county and for the horse racers. So... And I am presenting this as a one-year contract this year, but I think in the future, we may look at extending it out if that's okay. We wanted to see if this would work for us as the food and beverage, and so far, I think it's working pretty well. We run a lot of events at the grandstands, as you guys are aware. The biggest issue for us is just kind of flipping it back and forth from a racetrack to a rodeo arena, so that it gives these guys plenty of time to practice for their events. And I feel like Pocatello Downs has been a good partner of ours over the last few years, helping us accomplish our goals. So, any questions on the contract?
No, that was my only question. Well, I've got a couple of questions, but my first question was just the year, and you explained that. We just want to try it out, make sure it works for everybody.
Yeah, we really tried it. Last year was our first year, and like I said, I'm sure people had talked about our beer prices were a lot higher than the beer prices that they had had before. We changed the size of the beer, right? So, we went from like a 16 ounce to a 20 or, I don't know, 75 ounce, I don't know.
Our customers hate that, just so you know.
Yeah.
They get warm before you can finish your beer. I've heard it, I've heard it, I've heard it. Never experienced it, but I've heard it.
So, we did make a... We made a few changes last year. You know, the concessions area up there is kind of our proving ground for what we want to sell in concerts as well. So, we will... We offer a bigger variety, and concessions has done really well for both of us up there this year and last year, and our alcohol sales increased quite a bit last year. So, from our standpoint, it's working.
Second question I had comes from our attorney. Do you want to bring up that point that you made in the email you sent about the attorney's fees?
Oh, that's something I wanted the commissioners to be aware of, that under this contract, if there are any damages to county property during the execution of this agreement, or there's any breach of the contract, either way, the prevailing or the losing party would have to pay attorney's fees. That's pretty typical in contracts between private corporations. I don't see that that often in contracts related to municipal governments, public entities. So, I just wanted the commissioners to be aware. It's still a policy issue. It's not something that would make the contract illegal or problematic. It's just something you need to be aware of.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions from the attorney?
My question, can we do a multi-year contract? Can we go past the fiscal year?
There's an out clause.
Okay.
So, there would be an out clause, but...
Correct. Yeah. As long as there's a non-appropriations clause or... And it also depends on the structure of the payments. Where I'm not seeing... Is Pocatello Downs paying... Pocatello Downs paying Bannock County?
No, they don't.
For use of the facilities?
So, we take their concessions and alcohol sales in lieu of a payment, before they were paying us, but now they're working.
We... Other than our office rental, we rent that space underneath the grandstands for our office all year. So, that's the only thing we're paying for.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think that would be a problem in the future with the way the contract is structured.
Just as long as we're not going beyond our...
Correct. It's not putting the county in debt, so I wouldn't see that as being a problem with the way that this particular contract is structured.
And from a sponsorship standpoint, because we do sell... We do use sponsorship more frequently in the... Like, we bring in a lot of sponsors for the Fourth of July or for the concerts, but we have had people approach us about sponsoring some of our rodeo grounds, because we get so many people up here. And having three-year contracts is a selling point for those guys, because they know the events aren't going anywhere. So, high school rodeo, junior high rodeo, Idaho State University contract, those are all three-year events. This one was a multi-year event. We changed things up, and so, this is the second year. I feel confident at the end of this year, we'll have decent numbers to say if this is the direction we should go forward. And then that allows us to reach out to folks that want to maybe sponsor the grandstands or that want to sponsor parts of our rodeo arenas, so we can then say that we have X amount of people that show up to those events for every year.
So, in years past, we've had some concerns about stall rentals and what's going on there. Is that settled?
They've been super great for us. They've been really easy for us to work with. We have... We've... Honestly, I feel like we've got it kind of figured out. The big rub is between junior high rodeo and high school rodeo, because the high school, all stalls have to be vacated. And junior high, they can have a few. But both of those events, junior high, high school, and even ISU, those events are growing, which is a great thing to see in our community. And so, then we end up calling and working with Lucrana to say, all right, where are we at? Give you an exact stall count before we start letting people know how many stalls we can release. And so, it has been a good working relationship from our standpoint.
Yeah. And unfortunately, we don't have a lot of trainers who are choosing to stall up at the... I mean, it's up at the grandstands or, you know, up there. So, that hasn't been a problem. Yeah. And usually, the trainers that are there have been there for years. They're very aware of the events that we have. And like he said, we're working together to try and make it so it's fair for those guys who are staying up there training that they have use of the track, because that's, you know, paramount to their programs, that they can get out and work their horses on the track, so...
And the fees from the stalls go through you guys?
For a certain amount of time, but then...
But the contractors for the trainers are through you guys, not through us?
Yes. So, the trainers... And really, where we see a big influx of trainers is like the day before or the day after race day.
Yeah.
So, they'll bring in people that are going to be racing, they'll bring in their horses, stall them there. So, we don't see any revenue from that. But any of the events that we have that run up there during kind of the race season times, any stall rentals, yes, that comes through us.
Well, I just want to voice my appreciation. You guys do a good job up there.
Thank you.
Up the races. And also, our support. If you have problems with trainers or individuals in your group, we are supportive of trespassing people off of our property if they're causing problems. I just want that out there, straightforward on the record, if you guys have any questions about that.
No, I concur. Our relationship the last couple of years has been fantastic. Appreciate working with you, so...
Great. We appreciate that.
Very, very happy.
I'm... As long as legal is good, signing a multi-year deal, I agree for the very same thing. Continuity is always wonderful for you guys and us. Is there any event that... I guess as long as there's an out clause for something that we would not anticipate, some additional costs or damage or something that we would have to come back and on both parties, yours as well as ours, and say, because of a fire or whatever it is, there's an out clause in that contract?
And our dates stay very consistent from year to year, because we have to work with the other Idaho tracks and what's going on. So, and then, you know, we have to work around, you know, the high school and junior high rodeo. So, we don't have a lot of leeway in our dates, so they're very consistent from year to year. I mean, pretty much May and a few days in July is, you know, what we can do.
I'd just undergo with this one, with the one-year contract right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, this is a one-year contract.
This is one year, and then we get more data, and then we can go to a multi-year.
You want to make a motion in?
Anything? Did you?
No, nothing.
I'd make a motion to go ahead and sign a contract with Pocatello Downs.
You have a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Lucrana.
All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Shane, Fire Chief, come on up, and we'll have to go into the Board of Ambulance for this.
I'd make a motion to go into the Board of Ambulance.
Motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good. How are you this morning?
Doing well, thank you.
Good. Introduce yourselves.
Travis Bell, Athletic Director, Vice Principal at Highland High School, and the state IHSA Wrestling Tournament Manager.
And I'm Shane Groh. I'm the Assistant Chief of Operations and EMS for the Pocatello Fire Department and Bannock County Ambulance.
Okay. The request is?
So, we have a request to approve a waiver for... A fee waiver for ambulance standby for the state wrestling... State High School Wrestling Tournament Championship?
Okay. We pretty much do this on a regular basis.
We do.
Everything working out?
Everything's working out great. I just came to answer any questions you had. I don't know if... Did you request to waive the entire fee?
Whatever we've done in the past has been great. We have, you know, 1,200... We'll have 1,200 athletes competing with a girls' wrestling. This will be the last year, because next year it rotates to Boise again. And then, we're supposed to come back here for two years, but Moscow, the QB Dome is putting in a bid, so there's some of that going on. But so, this will be for at least the next two years. This will be the last year we're able to host it, bring lots of fans in. It's very... The venue's amazing. And again, they've been very, very helpful. I can't remember how many individuals were transported last year, but it, you know, it's a... There's injuries in wrestling. It's great, and it's a huge relief to the state to know that we have that extra on top of the port of medical team, that we have an ambulance there on site.
Okay. The total request is for 19 hours for a total dollar amount of $3,200 bucks, $3,230?
Yeah, that would be our fee. Obviously, our cost, if we were to waive that fee, isn't that high. It would be a little less. I don't... Where it's an estimate, I don't have the exact amount, but I don't think it would be a burden to our current budget.
Okay. Okay. Any questions?
I'm 100% in support of this. I mean, we need wrestling. We need it to stay here. I don't care about QB Dome. I don't care about Boise. I want it to stay right here, Pocatello, Idaho. And it is a phenomenal event, so I'm 100% in support of it.
All I know is it brings in a lot of dollars to some merchants and stuff around here as well, too, so...
And anywhere that you can put a symbol of Bannock County and Pocatello, Bannock County Fire and Ambulance District, we'd appreciate that also.
With that, I'll make the motion that we approve the waiver for the ambulance.
Okay. We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And then we'll need a motion to get out of the ambulance district.
I will make that motion, and we will adjourn out of the ambulance.
Okay. We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a good tournament. That brings us down to Jared.
Sorry, you don't get to say that.
Good morning. Jared Marshand, Treatment Court District Manager. Here today to talk about utilizing some more opioid funding to send for more Bannock County employees to the Drug War Conference this year in May, just from trying to get an early head start, so we can get the cheaper rates instead of last year, where we kind of came in and had to do a guestimate. We've had some switching in teams through probation and parole and attorneys moving into new roles. And so, like Mental Health Court got a new attorney. I'd like to send him two people from D6 treatment and one Treatment Court Coordinator that coordinates three courts here within the district and here in Bannock County specifically, Juvenile Drug Court. So, I put together a breakdown of our expenses. This year, if I can get on and register, we'll get the cheaper rate for hotels. So, I was like, I need to get out in front of them, see what we can do. So, I just... I came today to make that request, to send four employees to that conference this year.
We currently have $677,000 in opioid funds.
How many?
I don't know.
$677,000.
Sorry.
The only ongoing expenses we have for that is the Sheriff program with...
Five thousand.
Just last...
Now, now, I know you...
Right. Where they have the $5,000. So, we have sufficient to do this. This is... I believe Jared's the only one that comes in and asks for training funds.
How many people do these people serve? That... I mean, if we're sending them for opioid training and things like that, what's...
Right. So, they, you know, Diana and Kayla, they serve multiple courts. The counselors serve, I would say, probably near 100 people through D6 treatment between both of the courts that they serve. Greg, there are 25 people in Mental Health Court. That's the one that he's in charge of. And then Katie, she's going to be near 52. So, I mean, it's... It covers the majority of our courts here in Bannock County.
Okay. And Sheriff, are we still having a fairly large opioid problem here in the county?
Little bit.
Little bit.
With a grin.
Okay. Those are the only questions I had.
No, they're Bannock County employees. That's the only thing. I want to make sure that we're covering Bannock County employees, and then what's returned on the investment? And that's... I think it's very positive.
Okay. Commissioner, anything?
The only thing is, that money, where does that come? Where's the revenue stream?
Comes from the pharmacies.
A lawsuit?
There was a lawsuit against the pharmacies, and this is our percentage.
An ongoing settlement or a one-time settlement?
Some of them are ongoing, some of them are one times. It just depends on the different pharmacies and how the settlements...
I see no reason why we can't support this. It's wonderful.
Yeah. Well, then I'll move that we approve the request as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. I'll just do the same as I did last year.
Seth.
Good morning. Seth Scott, Director of District 6, Juvenile Detention Center. I'm just seeking signatures on a contract for a pre-audit. So, required to have a pre-audit every three years. So, the pre-audit that we're having here in this year begins February 1st. It'll just... And then, we'll have an onsite visit in late September, September 25th, 26th. So, the cost of the audit will be $6,200. We have previously budgeted $6,500 for this audit to take place.
You guys typically do well on this audit, correct?
Yeah. We've been through a bunch of these, and pretty standard at this point.
Okay. Any questions?
No. No. I make the motion that we approve the expenditures for this audit.
We have a motion, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Keep up the good work, Seth.
Thank you, have a good day.
Let's go to Hal.
Actually, Janae, I should say. Good morning.
Oh, excuse me, good morning, Commissioner, I'm Jesse Klein, Director of. It would be, in this time, our Code Enforcement Officer, to ask some items, an item to bring to your attention. To Janae, she can give you some history here.
We have, we had a code violation come across in October for a hay shed off of Hawkins Road. The property owner has been very willing to work with us. He just doesn't have the funds right now to pay for the permit to come in compliance. He did try to convert his property over to ag, didn't work out. That was going to cost him a lot more than just paying for a permit. He is a farming family, he has five children, he just doesn't have the amount to pay for the permit right now. So he's just wondering if it would be a possibility to get that fee waived, if possible.
What's, what's the cost of the fee?
Roughly a thousand dollars.
Real quickly, some history. He was hoping to do it as ag, it's not currently taxed as ag, or is it a five acre parcel? It's just adjacent to a farming operation. But the rules of an ag exemption are, one, it will be five acres or greater, and it will be taxed as ag. So he doesn't comply in either of those two components. We are not asking for the waiver, we're asking if it's something that would be entertained by the Commission so that we could instruct him to come and claim hardship before the Commission and ask for the waiver himself.
What's the violation?
He's just had a structure without a permit.
Not permitted structure.
I, I, I mean, he can come in before us, but I'm not in favor of it. I, I'm not in favor of opening that can of worms, starting to wave people that just decide they're, they're not going to obey the law and, and then they get caught and then want not to pay the penalty. I just, I, that's not where I'm going to go.
How big is the structure?
It's under two hundred square feet and it's just a hay structure. So four posts.
Open walls?
Yes.
Any other danger? Anybody else being affected by this structure?
No.
Or collapse of that structure? Any personal, I mean, there's no home that's going to be affected by the structure?
No, he, his property is very far away from his neighbors. It's just him pretty much on that road.
So it's a little pole barn for some hay shed?
Yes.
And how much did it cost him to build it?
He said it was about fifteen hundred bucks and he saved up to get it because he was using a tarp to cover his hay.
And how many square feet?
It's under two hundred. I don't know what the exact.
So ten by twenty?
Probably. I don't know what the exact measurements of it are. I just went out there, took pictures of it and contacted him, sent a letter and we've just been discussing.
So if somebody puts up a carport that's, you buy out of Costco, ten by twenty, do we require a permit for that?
No, we just require a development permit. We're not sure about square footage, Commissioner.
Well, what I'm, I'm just thinking out loud because I do know inside a lot of the cities, they've adopted like the, these little portable carports that are staked down and everything else, it was just too much of a nightmare to try to enforce and also approve them and as long as they wasn't against another structure or if there was no electricity in it, if there's no other utilities in it, you would not require a permit for that, right?
Correct.
But this is a hay barn, probably the height scares me a little bit more because they are higher. But if, and I appreciate, like, this is one of them things that probably, I wonder how many people out in the county have done this and we haven't caught them, not that it makes it right, but it, but it sure sets precedence out there. That, that's my concern is, where are you guys on this?
We've never had a code enforcer before.
Right.
And I support her.
And I agree with that, I'm just saying, but she's trying to do a very, very tough job.
I agree.
As a comment, Commissioner, we have backlog on top of other things that are being found. Because we didn't have the manpower, there were times when we were selected, so relative to larger structures, we would be more proactive. And now when we have complaints or concerns, then we now, with Janae, we now take action, so.
I'm, I'm, I'm on the fence between the two of you.
I haven't made a stance yet, I'm just asking.
Well, I see, I see the direction you're going, I kind of, I can, I can see that. I wonder if maybe we table this request for just a little bit because it's not going to.
Well, he has the opportunity to come and appear, of will.
Right, but what I'm thinking is, maybe we need to have a further discussion with Hal and everybody to look at those ordinances to see because I kind of, where Ken's talking about those little car sheds, do we want to chase all those type of things down? And this, to me, kind of fits into that.
So just as, just as a comment, we have most of that under control, to be quite honest. This one just happens to be slightly larger, different methodology of construction, pole barn versus something that you see that comes off, off the lot that's pre-sold, et cetera. So we told the applicant, rather than take the heavy hand, we told the applicant that we would come before the Commission and make them aware of a situation and find out their general, your general disposition on whether or not we should advise them to talk to Christie, get on the agenda and then come and claim hardship. If it's something that the Commission tells us, we don't want to go down that path for whatever reason or a multiple of reasons, we will support that and just be a little more forceful than heavy handed. Which we have the right to do, so that's, that's where I'm at.
Hal, in the city of Pocatello ordinance, even if you build your own structure and it's not a prefabbed building, if it's under four hundred square, square feet, I don't think they require a permit, is that right?
In the city of Pocatello, they have the same, they've adopted the same code that we have. And in the code, there's an exemption. A structure of two hundred square feet or smaller does not require a permit. We do the same thing, okay? The structure's, and I'm going to guess that it's larger than two hundred square feet, okay?
I see.
If you have a structure of conventional construction, six hundred square feet or less requires a permit but does not require a frost-protected foundation. So you have those two exemptions that work in, in the applicant's favor. Beyond that, so.
It looks to me like we, I think I agree with Mr. Half that we need to, make sure we do our due diligence. There are probably, this sounds light, but there are more serious infractions going on out there, I know. Because I've lived out there than a pole, the, the height of those things scare me to no end. Because those poles, if they do not put them in properly, if they do not get the proper braces on them, and then they're, they may be building it for hay and two years from now, they're going to start putting cars and machinery and everything else underneath there, then we, we are talking for a different purpose. So how we deal with it now could affect down the road. They migrate, is what scares me. And so I'm sympathetic, but I, I'm not so sure we don't need to look at, okay, what is our best course of action today? Legally that we, you guys can stand on. So I, I don't want fifteen hundred people in here as, on appeals because we're vague with giving you the ammunition that you need. I think I would feel more that we would need to address that particular policy and maybe put in the type of, is it commercial grade? Is it just somebody that's stuck up with pallets? I do agree that we need to, I, I would like to, rather than have you send them our way, we need to address the, it reminds me of people who wanted cat ordinances. There is no such that you can enforce them. And what I worry about is putting something out there that we're going to be hamstrung and we don't have the resources to literally enforce those kind of things. That's, I, I'd like to table that until we have a little bit more insight and your input and maybe develop and change that policy just a little bit or give you some guidance. That's my, that's my philosophy.
That's why we're here, to get your guidance.
But I'm just wondering.
And I'm with Commissioner Moser, I want to support you because we, we need you and we want to definitely stand behind your efforts. So why don't we put this on the work session for a couple of weeks? Get with Christie and get us, us back on, we can talk about it, come up with a definitive plan and then, then we can answer the question more appropriately, I think.
Works for us just fine.
And thank you for, you know, doing this because it, that's going to be a thankless job out in the county, I can tell you that, so.
It's not bad, so.
Would I be, if you get a chance, let me know who that person is.
Okay, we shall.
I don't know if it affected, and I don't think it needs to be in part of that. When you say Hawkins Road, I may know.
Janae will send you an email.
Yeah, send me that information.
I can do that.
It might help, because everybody's going to have hardship out there.
We can all make any difference.
No, but I'm just, I'm just curious. Because there are certain families that are just notorious for going their own way and not complying, but I don't know, so.
All right, I can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go, yeah, let's jump down to Matthew real quick.
Hey, Matthew Phillips, HR Director for Bannock County. What I have for you is really just a discussion about developing a new leader orientation. I think the county's not different from other organizations. We hire or we identify high performers and then we don't give them any training in their new leadership roles. We offer a general orientation to employees right now that's between two and a half to three hours long. And the proposal I have before you is to develop a new leader orientation course that would basically take a day. I would, I would teach it whenever we have a new leader come on or we have a new promotion. And so I, I put together a proposed topic list. I also want to, if, if you think it's worth developing, share it with other elected officials. The reason I'm just getting your disposition is because it would be a commitment for training time and resources. But I just wanted to get your, again, your thoughts on it before I put a lot of effort into trying to develop the curriculum and discussing it with other elected officials as well. Some of these topics actually were given to me from a new leader in the county. I think I was here about two weeks and she sent me an email and said, oh, I wish I would have known this, this and this. So I used some of those notes along with my own experiences in being a new leader in the county. It would basically cover three areas. First being just general leadership and management techniques and training. The second, dealing with compliance and risk as new managers, you have to worry about a lot more things. And I think you, you have to adapt your mindset from just being a, a technical expert to making sure your, your department and your functions are in compliance. And then the third section would be just on county operations, them understanding our accounting and auditing processes, our personnel processes, making them familiar with our software systems, our internet, all the different resources that they have available to them so they don't have to kind of stumble through it their first three to six months. So the goal would be to, I, I think it would be a eight to nine hour course. Some of our leaders work a ten hour day, some of them work an eight hour day. I just split the difference at nine hours and I could spend three hours on each section. And, and yeah, let's see. I think that's about it. So any, any questions or thoughts that, that you have, if you think it's worth moving forward to work on? This, this again, it's just a suggested topic, training agenda I've, I've put before you, but obviously I could take feedback from you and the other elected officials. And then a lot of this will have to rely on the technical expertise of different department managers. Me and Christie have already talked. They would have to develop a lot of their own slides. And I even offered Christie, she can come teach her section if she's ever available or someone from accounting. But if not, we could at least go over basics if she's not available. And, and other department heads that I've talked to, IT, they said they'd develop a few slides, so on and so forth. So it would just, yeah, be a way to try to get our, our leaders onboarded in a way that they feel that they're, they've got the tools to, to do, do their jobs and, and not have to learn so much of it just, just as they go, so.
I like it and I think you're on the agenda for the elected officials meeting this afternoon or this morning so you can, we can talk about it there as well.
Okay.
I support it a hundred percent. And that's, my only question was timing of other offices, but, but budgeting and all that is vital, too. I mean, that's, that's a big part of learning leadership.
Well, I, I agree, I think this is a good topic for the next meeting because without their support.
Sure.
It's hard for us, I mean, we need, we need all of the department heads to, and elected officials to be on board as well, too. So I think it's a great thing, we just need to make sure we're all pushing in the same direction.
Absolutely, I just wanted your disposition first.
I didn't see any dollars on any of this.
Well, I. Yeah, a lot of it would just be their wages for, for that day. I, I do have a, a contract that I'm going to get on your agenda soon. The only thing I'm looking to add to it is a, a learning management system, buying a few seats in that. Before, I know the county was looking at a, buying a lot of seats in that. I don't want to do that much, probably less than five thousand dollars, which is less than a quarter of our training budget. It would just give us access to more compliance-type courses. Right now, we have about eighty courses available to us through ICRAIM's system. This new system would give us access to about seventeen hundred courses that we could also use for different purposes. But I, again, I, I didn't want to put that contract out there until I felt like, you know, you thought this was worth moving forward with as well, so.
Okay, we're good.
If, if we can dovetail with an ICRAIM or something that's already in existence.
Yeah.
Would love to see us do that.
And if, if you look to the, if you look on the training agenda draft that I made, just on the right-hand column, I kind of show you different areas where I was thinking, I pulled different sources from. Some of it from ICRAIM, some of it from Idaho Association of County trainings. Some things are publicly available on YouTube that are great and some things would be from this new learning management system called Knowledge City. So. Absolutely, there's lots of resources out there.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we'll talk about it later.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Christie, Clouser.
Christie Clouser, Cal Patroller, Tony, Alex, Nick, do you guys want to come up? I've invited the Sheriff's Office just simply because they are going to hopefully play a role in spending the funds. So some background on this, last year when we did the Secure Rural Schools allocation, the Commission approved doing eighty percent to the county and twenty percent to Title II funds. When I filled out the report, I accidentally put it in Title III column. So we now have Title III funds that we need to spend. With that spending, there are some hoops that we need to jump through. We have to change the allocation of how we did it because Title III is calculated out a little bit different. So we'll be changing that allocation. But then to spend the funds, the participating county has to spend those dollars using it for broadband, for search and rescue, or on BLM for service land. We have a new backcountry portion of our search and rescue group that really doesn't have any equipment that we have been able to provide for them. So the hope was, I reached out to the Sheriff's Office and asked them what kind of items that they may need. We're looking at twenty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-two cents that we'll need to spend. When I reached out, I got a list of items that they would use for search and rescue needs. There's a single track litter which would transport the patient, five thousand dollars, get snow tracks for our four-wheelers, smell toboggan for patient transport and then vacuum mats which is also for transport. And then also a new four-wheeler. So those items would come up to twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. If the Commission would approve this, that would spend that twenty-two thousand dollars within fiscal year twenty-five. The difference of the money that we have available versus the needs would come from the search and rescue budget. And then the other stipulation with spending this money is, they need to get on next week's agenda because we need to do a certification of the funds that we have and then also a certification of how they're spent. We didn't spend any money in twenty-four because it didn't come to my attention that we had it until just recently when this certification came forward. So when we decide on that use, then we'll have to do a publication and leave it open for public comment for forty-five days. And then after that public comment, then we can spend the funds, so.
My only question when I read through this was, when the SRS did not get funded this year, so you're using.
Last year's.
Last, leftover, okay.
And this is an annual certification, so if they do decide to reinstate the SRS funds, I'll make sure that it's in the right column.
Yeah.
And that we have Title II and not Title III. The document you guys signed did have it in column three.
Well, I would anticipate the SRS funds being reinstated. That was a pretty big miss this year, the legislature for that, so I would anticipate those coming back.
Luckily for us, it's not as much money.
Correct.
But for our other Idaho counties, it's a lot more. So the ask today is just to see if you're okay with me moving forward with utilizing these funds for the backcountry search and rescue operations. And it's going to be called search and rescue, but I'm just differentiating it because it's for federal enforced lands.
Do we have any other options for these funds?
We could look into some other options. Other options are, we could use it for emergency services, firefighting, and law enforcement patrols. But right now, we really don't have any needs, I don't think they're in the BLM forced lands.
Some equipment might be utilized if we had to use it for that same purpose.
So you're okay with this direction?
Like the four-wheelers and stuff like that, yeah.
I'm okay with going this direction, more and more people that are coming in, we're going to, the demand for search and rescue. I mean, we have more bike riders, we have more snowmobilers. In fact, all you got to do is look at the newspaper anymore and see somebody that's been stranded somewhere in the search and rescue is basically say. been stranded somewhere in the search and rescue has basically saved their lives. And so if this is the best proposal, I'm okay with proceeding with Christie's plan. You know, it sounds good to me. You're looking at probably two months out, about the time you do all your 45 days and everything.
Yes, he's going to put the publication together so she can have it for you next week, but then, yeah, we'll have to publish.
We only have a meeting on Friday next week.
So essentially, yes, we're about two months out.
Yeah, it's as good a plan as, for those rural funds, I assume that's what this is here.
Yeah.
And I think the rural country would benefit because we do have a lot more snowmobilers and off-road motorcycles and everything else that are out there all over those.
And that was the whole reason why that backcountry, we had a list of citizens that approached us that wanted to be a part of that backcountry. I'll let Lieutenant.
Because you had one big rescue last year, didn't you, on the backcountry when it was pretty challenging?
A body recovery last year.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
A person that if they wouldn't have been out there, probably wouldn't have been found. And the increase since COVID on the backcountry use has significantly increased by the community. Last summer was the first summer we utilized this new team and we used them on at least five different callouts. Were pretty significant. This year in the winter, we've already had two callouts. So this equipment would greatly benefit the team. We have more bodies, it would give us more options to get people up there and to transport the patients out safely with those snow toboggan. Because right now, all we have is a double-track. It's called a litter, basically, and you have to convert it, but it's wide. So this snow toboggan would give us the ability to get into tighter spaces because what we're seeing also is motorcycles, people are putting snow tracks on motorcycles and they're going up places.
Right up.
Got something to share here?
So the main issues we've seen like last summer was, and this year, is people stuck in razors. On four-wheelers, we've had people getting lost and then the family will call us, we go up and try to locate them. And then the, also a big increase in backcountry skiing on scalp mountain. And I know, talking with the backcountry guys, there is a concern that, there is avalanches up there and they're concerned that one day there might be an avalanche for people up there hiking. And these guys know these areas like the back of their hand. So it's a great resource that we've got these guys on board.
I got a personal experience of this. One of my neighbors, she was on a side-by-side and she rolled that over and rolled into some brush where no one could find her. And this backcountry team, they're out all night, mostly on mountain bikes and stuff looking for them, and they finally found her in the morning, one of these volunteers. And if it wasn't for this backcountry team, she'd probably not be alive today, so.
From the photos of that incident, looking down to where they heard her yelling, you couldn't see a thing. And she had, she was on a razor and that was rolled downhill in thick brush. She was injured pretty good, so it was.
Those guys that make up of that team, they're all trail guys that are hikers, Luke.
Luke Nelson.
I know Luke.
Very avid.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And he's the one that actually approaches and wants to develop this group of guys. And they, those guys know, you just tell them kind of the area and they know exactly where these people are. They're pretty amazing.
And a lot of these guys are ski patrolmen, and so they have very specific training on backcountry medical rescue.
We're fortunate to have them want to be a part of it, so hope's good.
With the increase of four-wheel drives, I'm not worried even about the razors and the ATVs. You ever seen so many Jeeps running around?
Now we've already had one.
They all think they're going to go somewhere. And, you know, I've been out all night looking for kids before and that's a long night.
The increase is also not just up north, it's down south, especially with lava. Because down there, they're renting out machines that have snow tracks and you're getting people that are going up to the mountains in lava.
Cottonwood, so.
Okay.
With that, I'd make the motion that we go ahead and whatever Christie said.
Whoa, 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 wait a minute.
I'm not going to quote all of what she just said. We make those funds available.
You made her day.
We have a friendly amendment on that.
We'll make those funds available to, in what is it, District Title III?
Title III.
Funds and make it available and proceed further.
Any discussion on that?
No. Nancy will figure it out.
All right, we have a motion all in favor, say hi.
Hi. Thank you.
There you go.
What time's that meeting?
10:30.
15 minutes?
Yeah. All right, Jason. Aye.
You just made Christie's day there.
Hello, Jason DiTratto, Administrator.
I wanted to make sure the commission was aware of the recent order from Judge Thompson.
Not until I read it this morning and I wasn't happy.
Yeah.
I wasn't happy when I read it yesterday.
Yeah. And so according to his interpretation of the Public Defender Act, that those, that private terminations aren't covered by the SPD. And so his order, he feels like that has been a historical appointment for people in this situation and that the county would bear that responsibility. There was a hearing on that, you have his order there. I don't like have legal advice to give you, but I do have the same thing that's happening in Bonneville County. And they put in a motion to reconsider and had an argument of why the SPD should pay for that. And I do have the information on that case for you to be able to see. These cases are complicated. They do take anywhere from 50 to 100 hours per case. So, you know, depending on the reimbursement rate, we're looking at $85,000 to $10,000 per case on this. And so we just wanted to make sure you are aware of it and that if you have any questions about that, or if I could give you the information on the case that's happened in Bonneville County and what their motion to reconsider consists of.
Dan's not here, but we're not remodeling any courtrooms anymore. Plain and simple. We got to come up with money. This is what the court order says. Doesn't care where it comes from.
Well, I expect there to be an issue litigation on this. This is a, in my perspective, this is a gray area that's not quite settled.
So.
And what we have right now is a decision from a magistrate court that'll be at the district level court, then to the supreme court. Eventually, this question's going to get answered.
But action, yeah, that's where I was coming forward to, where you're coming to that. I felt that timing where IAC is next week, that feels like it's a, it wasn't identified in the Public Defender Act. And so we might be getting quite a few more of these throughout the state. The SPD may appeal the decision by Judge Walker in Bonneville County. You guys may file a motion to reconsider on this and have a hearing. But the main reason is, like, to keep my personal feelings out of it, is just to let you guys know what we can do in order to move forward and that it's a, that it's an item that would have to have action taken on it if you don't agree with his decision.
So Joe, what do you recommend for us?
I need to review this. I don't recommend any action today. I'll review this and then we'll have conversations later on about what method we'll use to determine this issue.
Okay, that's what we'll do.
Going forward, this might be something to bring up next week at IAC.
Yes.
Jason and I talked a little bit, Dixon, and I talked a little bit about possibly trying to budget some contingency money in next year's budget because we don't have any this year except in that potential litigation line, which this doesn't qualify. But where do we pay a $10,000 public defense bill when we don't have any money budgeted in public defense except for rent? So we really don't have any options to pay this bill because we were told we didn't need to worry about it. So next year, we'll think about it.
Well, I dare any suggestion, we're done remodeling.
You can play that game. Thompson's was next, right?
That is true. And I, we definitely don't want to, I mean, he's making a rule of law and he's not trying to say, and he's leaving his personal opinions out of it and making a rule of law, but he wants it to be resolved. And this is the, his order on it. But there is additional action that could be taken on there after this. But I just wanted it to be on your attention so that you knew that the timing might be right where next week things are happening. I can leave the other case with Mr. Adford so that he has access to who filed that motion to reconsider. I was hoping our county wouldn't be the one that this fight was taking place in. We thought that it would be in Bonneville or somewhere else, and that might still be the case. But we do see one to three of these a year. And for whatever reason, the legislature did not put that specific thing on there.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
And I'll just say, I do appreciate Judge Thompson. He's a good guy, but I'm not happy that this is left out with the legislature.
All right. All right, Christie. Thanks, Jason.
Would you want me to put that on the agenda next Friday?
Uh, no, let's wait till we see.
Okay, Christie Davenport, Management Assistant. I am here before you with copier situation. We thought in August that we had transferred a Rico copier to public defense when they went to the state. And it turns out that we cannot do that. But in the meantime, the monthly payments have not been being paid. And also, as far back as August, there have been late charges that have not been paid. So we're accruing late charges on top of monthly payments. So at this time, we owe $633.08 on this copier. The Public Defender's Office says they have not used it since the last day of September. I don't know why I didn't find out about this until the middle of December, but that's neither here nor there. We could do a buyout if we want to, which would be $5,066.50, or we could return it for $3,149.3. Or we could see if there's a department in the county that we could transfer it to if somebody else needs a Rico copier. From what I can tell, the agreement is a little fuzzy, I guess. And the term in months looks like 60 to me. And we signed it in November of 2020, so I would think we only have, you know, like, if that doesn't work that way.
This is the same cop, the same situation that we have with adult probation.
Okay, so.
They don't automatically turn back and they don't automatically pay off. So if you remember, last year at some point, Evy came to us because she had a copier she wanted to get rid of, they forced us to do a payout, and we were still making payments on it even though it had been past the five-year term. So one lesson from this is let's just buy the stupid things moving forward instead of leases because then we don't have to deal with these little issues. But also, that was all.
Well, I very much appreciate your comments on the email about where you thought we should go. And I kind of liked option number two, see if we can ask Valley if they would unilaterally terminate the agreement. And that's the direction I would like to try and go. I mean, I don't mind if we bring the account current.
Well, I think that, I feel like we need to do that. But somehow, there needs to be a pause or something.
How many copiers do we buy from Valley a year, or how many?
We just loaded the village with things from Valley.
That's.
All the furniture, all the, come from Valley.
The other, the other problem is Valley is not Valley anymore, it's Dex. So I don't know if this is going to be a problem. Hopefully, it won't be. But I do have somebody that I'm in touch with in Salt Lake, so I can work on that. But I might need your help.
Okay, I can, I can help you with that. My perspective is I think generally speaking, corporations want to do business with the county. We're talking about one copier, we're not talking about a high-ticket item. The other option that we can, that we have is, as Christie talked about, this contract, there's two problems with it. It goes past the five-year window. It also puts the county in debt from initiation. So it, there is an argument the county has that this contract was never legal because it created a recurring yearly debt on the county, you know, before that money had appropriated. That would be a legal fight that I'm not sure is worth over $3,000 or $5,000.
And with our copier leases, these have been tightened up a little bit, but we have a lot of departments just signing these and they honestly have no authority to obligate the county.
Right.
But we did run into that with the copier leases. So that's.
And I did look into this. My guess is that, that number, because I couldn't tell whether that was a 60 or a year.
Yeah, an 80.
60 divided by 12 is five years. Contracts like this are typically five years, so I'm assuming it's five years. And then it does automatically renew unless we give them 90 days notice of our intent to cancel. So it's a perpetual contract.
Right.
We do have funds in public events we overbudgeted for the rent.
Oh, sweet.
So we do have funds to cover this past due amount, which I show the invoice I received. The past due amount was $633, but the current charges were $232.
Right, they keep.
So I'm guessing we have to pay through the end of April, or the end of January. So we're going to have.
I don't have January as yet.
No, but, well, the invoice I forwarded to you should have all of that.
Okay, we'll talk about that later.
But we have sufficient funds to pay the $865, and if you choose to do the buyout or the return option, we've got funds to pay that as well. And we'll just have to look through and see what copier leases we still have ongoing so that we can be proactive maybe and just take care of this.
But this goes back, and you looked at this and I talked to you about it before, that this was included in the stuff that was supposed to be transferred to the public defense and wasn't our obligation.
But I think you're.
The problem is the contract is between two parties. The contract is between two parties. The full name on the contract is the Bannock County Public Defender. That's an office that no longer exists, but it was a subdivision of the county. The contract is signed by a commissioner. And so I would not read this as, I would read this as being a contract between Valley and Bannock County. And the move from, you know, they moved from the county office to a state office, they're no longer a county office. So that, in my opinion, that leaves us on the hook and we weren't able to give it or sell it or assign the contract because the contract has a non-assignment clause. So we could potentially give it to the Bannock County Public Defender's Office, but Valley would have to sign off on that. And they haven't done that.
We haven't asked them to.
I think we should bring it current and negotiate hard with Valley before we go too much further.
The one thing I would recommend is the contract does award damages to Valley if there's any damage to the copier during its use. Where it's sitting in a state agency right now, I would recommend that we pick it up. If it gets damaged while it's in the possession of that state agency, they won't be on the hook, we will, under the contract.
So has Dan Kendall picked it up?
And I would agree with Ken. If we, and also to help that negotiation, get a list of all the copier leases we may have coming due.
So I just made a note that I'll look and see who we're making monthly recurring payments on these for, we'll find the agreements, and then we'll start working towards terminating those.
Yeah, because I would like to treat this kind of like we did Enterprise. If they don't want to terminate this one in good faith, then we'll go somewhere else.
We'll have a long memory.
The other problem we have with these is if you are, they have a short turnaround time for payment. And if you are late, they tack on 26 bucks, 29 bucks. It's just ridiculous because it's just an ongoing value.
And that's my other question is when we pay it, do we still not pay the late fees? Because I know that's our policy.
You're going to have to.
I don't think we have to.
There's some that, if we can waive late fees, we always try to do that, but there's some that just won't waive it, so you have to pay it, otherwise we'll still have an outstanding balance with them.
Yeah, I know, right, okay.
All right, so we need a motion on this.
With that, I'll make a motion that we bring. With that, I'll make that motion that we bring it current and do some negotiating with some added information on the current leases and maybe see what we can negotiate with them. I do agree that we probably should take possession of that copier from wherever it's at to prevent any further issues with it.
Okay, we have a motion. Any further discussion?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Kristi, you're giving that invoice.
Real quick, last week, we had a meeting with Buddy Rimmel about an employee to authorize LEED without pay. We have that authorization here today. Any discussion on that?
No.
All right, all in favor of authorizing or signing the LEED without pay, say aye.
Aye.
And last question was Ken searching for authorization or funding or permission to take his own vehicle to IAC next week due to no cars available.
If, and I will just use the card just for fuel only.
No, you cannot use your county card to put fuel in your personal vehicle. That is a misappropriation of us.
Yeah.
Okay, then I will. Then I guess to be blunt, I'm paying my own way to go over there, unless you come up with another plan.
The policy is that we will pay mileage halfway.
One way.
One way. So...
Sorry, I don't want you in trouble, so that's why I jumped on.
And I, and okay, but we may look at that policy. I can just promise you that, because there are times, I have multiple reasons sometimes why I want to take my own personal reasons, personal car. And I think there should be some latitude within the county with those that approve it. I may be out of line from counsel, but...
Well, let me interrupt here a little bit. We pay halfway when it's, you're taking your own car for your own personal reasons. But if we have no cars available...
Exactly.
Then that's a different situation.
Right.
To me, because we are not able to provide, and so...
That's what we've done in the past.
I thought we'd paid both ways when there's no cars available, or one way.
If there are no cars available, but, but we've asked people to check multiple departments. You need to ask the assessor's office.
Yeah.
And other departments, yeah.
We have one out of the assessor's office, and that...
And we just got that new pickup, too, two days ago.
And it's going to go to Blackfoot today. But, but that's all I'm saying is, when, there's two different circumstances.
Right.
One where I'm going on vacation afterwards, or I have, I'm going to visit family afterwards, or one where there's no vehicles available.
Right.
And we have had employees choose to take their own vehicle. Adam McKinney chooses to take his own, and he always, he just doesn't get reimbursed.
But there's vehicles available.
Yes.
And that's what I'm saying, the differences, in my opinion.
And last year, I took my own vehicle because I went skiing after and got one way.
Yep. So I just wanted to bring that up, that there's two different situations.
So since there are no vehicles available, we can pay mileage both ways.
And we checked multiple departments for vehicles.
Okay, so, given that...
I'll let somebody else make that motion, I'll be...
Well, third order, if there are no other vehicles available, I'm willing to make that motion that we authorize mileage both ways and call it good. Discussion?
No.
All in favor, we have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.